I'll meet the order and call Councilman Poole to listen completely.
Place flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the row.
Councilman Poole.
Here.
Councilman Cotton.
Here.
Councilman Watson.
Here.
Councilman Barton.
Here.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
We have a quorum for transaction of the city's business, sir.
Uh, approval of the minute. Uh, I'm only asking.
I'll promote the approval minutes of last meeting.
Set. Motion by Councilman Watson to approve the minutes from the last meeting, seconded by Councilman Barton. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
The motion carries. The minutes from the last meeting are approved.
I would like to welcome our visitors that we have today. A few new faces, and I'm glad you're all here. Appreciate y'all coming. Uh, we're gonna change the order when the proclamation is. So, the next item will be the approval of the agenda, and I would like to make it F.A. for the proclamation presentation.
F.A.?
F.A. Or F.1, I guess.
Okay. Mayor, the council has a copy of the agenda. There's a copy on the wall for the audience. So noted one change to make F.1, the presentation of the proclamation. Are there any other changes that need to be made to the agenda? Hearing none, those who would like to approve the agenda as amended, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. The agenda is approved, as amended.
And first item we have is a public hearing, Camp 31 BBQ, and I'll call it a public hearing to order. And see if anybody is here that won't speak in opposition.
Speak in favor of it first.
Or speak in favor of the, uh, of this city's grant or at camp.
If you will come to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
Um, Larry Murphy. Um, I'm opening up Camp 31 BBQ in Bruton, Alabama, at 2:22 St. Joseph Street. Um, what did I do? Just an agenda of what I've got in mind to do. I've never done this, so.
I'd be great.
And most specifically, why it would be good for Bruton, what you're doing?
Well, several reasons it'd be good for Bruton. Number one, I've got anywhere from 20 to 40 employees that I'll be putting on staff, you know, in the Bruton, or in or around the Bruton area. Very realistic figure. Um, naturally, I've got a lot of money. I own the building, so I've got a lot of money that I'm putting into the building. Um, I don't know if you want figures and stuff of what goes in it. I'm not sure, but, um, I don't have a problem disclosing. I'm gonna be somewhere around $240,000 to $50,000 in improvements and betterments. The building naturally, you know, it cost was around $400,000, $417,000 to be exact. Um, you know, I'm, I'm trying to put a restaurant downtown that would bring, you know, people to Bruton. I've got a reputation all over the eastern half of North America, Canada included. And this club, you know, actually knows it, uh, with, uh, one of the clubs here locally in Bruton, actually, I got highlighted in it in Bruton, Alabama, was listed as where I was from, and et cetera, and et cetera. So, I draw a lot of people to this city, you know, as far as, as, as far as outside of Bruton coming in. I understand we wanna support our town, you know, but you wanna try to get outside of people to come in, I would think, too. And I'm a destination. I'm not just, uh, I'm not just a place, you know, that, you know, was opened up trying to capture X number of dollars out of the community, you know? I'm trying to draw people into the city also. I'd like to see downtown revitalized. I'd like to see something in downtown happening. I'm afraid if we don't do something with it for too long, you know, it's going, it's going the wrong way. Um, I've actually brought everything up, or I'm bringing, the process of bringing everything up to code. It's gotta have a full sprinkler system in the building. Phase one is gonna be the restaurant, and it's gonna be a full sprinkler system in it. Or it'll have, you know, all the latest bales and whistles, you know, that a restaurant can afford to have, uh, and it'll be somewhere around 150 to 200-seat family restaurant. You know, it's gonna be orientated towards family. At the moment, you know, I'm looking to put a beverage license there. Uh, I don't see barbecue without, you know, at least beer in it, bourbon in it anyway, so I'm probably gonna have to put a beverage license in it, you know, to open up, so I'll be trying to get that approval, too, before it's over.
Have you got the estimated completion date when you hope to be open?
I'm hoping, I mean, I've got a plan, and I've got a pretty concrete plan, February the 1st. I'm hoping to be finished with the remodeling on the restaurant somewhere around mid-January, and then I'll start training employees.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions?
I have one. Mr. Murphy, you said you're gonna be hiring between 20 and 30 employees?
Yes.
How many shifts do you plan to run, and then what would your hours be?
My hours are fixing to be, at the, opening up hours are gonna be from 11 to probably 9 or 10. It just depends on how business wants it. Um, now, when I'm saying, you know, 30 to, uh, I mean, 20 to 30 employees, that's a hard figure. I would imagine probably half of that'd be full-time staff and two management staffs, not counting myself, naturally, you know, that's involved in this. But, um, I'm, I'm a local business man. Everything I'm fixing to be doing is gonna be locally oriented, as far as banks, as far as, you know, I'll make the money here and it'll stay here, I hope.
And, uh, nine to, nine, 11 to 9 or 10, um, how many days a week is that?
Sir?
You said your hours were gonna be from 11 to 9 or 10. How many days a week is that gonna be?
Uh, I'm gonna be open six days a week, minimum. Maybe open seven before it's over, but I'm, that's sort of up in the air at the moment. Monday's a great day for restaurants to close and clean, you know, because some cleaning you can't do, like vent hoods and stuff like that. You don't need to do them during normal business hours. So, you really need at least one day a, one day a week, but I intend to be open, uh, Tuesday through Sunday.
Okay.
Any other questions or any other comments from the people here?
I, I have one thing. This is a tremendous capital investment.
For me, it is.
Well, it would be to any small business, to somebody coming in and putting, I mean, picking number four, five, 600,000, depending on your equipment. Um, I mean, and from a city standpoint, I mean, I, I want to thank you personally because this is a tremendous investment, and I think I could speak for the rest of these council members, that we wanna make sure that you're offering every success and everything that can be done to, to, to make your business successful. And I, I know personally how tough it is for a small business, you know, when you start meeting regulations and certain, certain things that you have to comply with. Um, but, but I'd just like to say that, that I'm, I'm well pleased that, you know, you're making a commitment to invest this kind of money in the city, and from a city standpoint, if there's anything else that we can do, um, that, that can, that can help you, 'cause I know you've gotta do some, it's gonna be a lot of money spent on advertising and going out with all the different modes out there to let everybody know that you're here. But I, I think it, I've seen your building, and I would encourage anybody here to go down there to see what you're doing, but I, I think it's something that will be a, when you get it finished, it will be something that will be a draw and cause people to wanna come into Bruton, which is what we want with, whether it's your business or any business. We want people to come in here, so.
Well, you know, I, just like you, you know, in fact, I'm, I'm on my budget already. You know, I budgeted a thing at $150,000, and it's never gonna make it. And listen, that doesn't include restaurant equipment now. That's just improvements and betterments on the building, from air conditioner loads to sprinkler systems to wine, to plumbing, et cetera, et cetera, which incidentally, all was locally, you know, all of them were local people that I'd used. I didn't go outside of town and get anybody.
Sure.
And, I mean, they had good prices, good quality work, you know, that was my, you know, main goal, to get it all done. The, uh, and you asked, you know, what can you do to help the city? I mean, I will put a bronze star on the door. Y'all have done a great job so far, you know, not just Lawton Ship, you know, he's been real helpful with several codes I had to deal with. He saved me a little bit of money here and now on that stuff. Um, you know, I mean, when I first started talking with this, you know, I believe I was talking to you, Mayor, it was about the amount of the, uh, the grant that, you know, I might, I might be able to apply for. Uh, you know, any way you could help me with all of that, you can. I would really appreciate it because it has stepped way out of its boundaries, you know, to what I want, you know? Not necessarily it's your fault, but the city's picked this code up for firing stuff, you know, so it's actually been a pretty heavy blow. The sprinklers were budgeted for $55,000, now $130,000. And how I hired an engineer and afforded to pay that engineer and come up with no better bid than that is beyond my wildest imagination, and I hate him. I don't understand him.
Okay. Any more comments or questions? If not, I'll close the meeting.
To clarify, it's the right thing to give anybody in opposition an opportunity to
speak against.
I do.
He spoke for, but I don't recall hearing a speaking against. Opportunity given.
Oh, I did. I asked first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good enough. But you're satisfied with it? You satisfied with that, sir?
He asked first who was against it.
Okay. We have a resolution here that restates to the effect of what Mr. Murphy presented, that his business will occupy a business in the downtown business historic district, helping perhaps to contribute to revitalizing the downtown area, that his business will be a full-table service restaurant seating approximately 150 to 200 people, will provide a catering service and a venue for holding meetings or gatherings. He gave us the number of employees that he projects to hire, and there are even some projections as to what annual sales figures would be. In addition to that, it would be generating tax money for the city. So, it's up to the council to determine if this is a valid and viable purpose to support by awarding an economic incentive grant to him.
I make a motion to approve 15-12, 15-12-14.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Barton to approve Resolution Number 15-12-14, seconded by Councilman Watson. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, and Resolution Number 15-12-14 is approved.
The next, uh, item is old business, and there is none. Under new business, the first item is approval of accounts payable.
I make the motion for payable, make a pay counts payable.
Second. Motion by Councilman Poole to approve accounts payable, seconded by Councilman Cotton. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, and accounts payable are approved.
Next item I'll call on Lawton Ship.
Mayor and Council, the Planning Commission, about three months ago, began to look at the bed and breakfast ordinance the city has presently, and, uh, does not allow for any bed and breakfast in commercial areas. And so, the Planning Commission, uh, we worked and came up with, uh, some additions to the one that we had, instead of just completely redoing the whole ordinance, we just added the section for, uh, from bed and, we had bed and breakfast residences, which is already in the ordinance we have now, so we added bed and breakfast ends, which are actually for B2 and B3 business districts. So, this pretty much up, up and down Douglas Avenue, any general business area, so, um, we changed the, uh, we made one addition to the definitions, what bed and breakfast end actually is, and, uh, we had the change in the, um, one change in the bed and breakfast residence for, um, for the number of guest rooms in that dwelling, so. Any questions?
Mr. Shilt presents this as a recommendation from the Planning Commission. What would the requi, what the requirement would be, would be to publish a notice of an ordinance change in the Bruton standard. Timeliness to do that would be on December 16th, 2015, to December 23, 2015, and this notice would be also informing the public that a public hearing on this matter would be held in the council chambers on January of the 11th at 4:30 PM. At such time, the public can speak in favor of or in opposition to, and the council can act on the matter as it deems fit.
Need a three-step or just an approval?
No, this is just, just to approve the publication of the notice in the newspaper and schedule a public hearing.
Okay. I make a motion to approve 15-12-14-1. That's one.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Barton to approve Resolution Number 15-12-14-1, seconded by Councilman Cotton. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, and Resolution Number 15-12-14-1 is approved, and we will give notice to the public and hold a public hearing in the council chambers on this matter on January of the 11th of 2016.
I'll call the city clerk the next three items.
Our Public Works Department has a loader that is used at the landfill that is coming off of lease. It's a good piece of equipment, so we have a purchase option on this loader. I have received bids from local banking institutions on a three-year term and on a four-year term. The finance price to purchase the expiration of the lease is $48,475.46, and I understand from our Public Works Director, Mr. Jerkins, that it's a solid, sound piece of equipment, and that certainly is in the interest of the city to retain this piece of equipment. Our lease payment has been some $4,800. The finance payment in retaining this piece of equipment will be approximately $1,800. We have a resolution prepared today to award the financing of this piece of equipment to First Exchange Bank at a three-year term rate of 2.625%, and the amount to be financed would be the $48,475.46.
I'll promote you to approve Resolution Number 15-12-14-2.
Second. Motion by Councilman Watson to approve Resolution Number 15-12-14-2, seconded by Councilman Barton. Is there any discussion?
Just one.
Yes, sir?
I'd like to ask, how old is this piece of equipment?
It's 2010.
2010?
Yes.
And it is hours or miles?
Oh, it's hours as far as it's on there, but we just had the undercarriage completely redone. It's got a brand-new undercarriage.
Okay. But just for the record, do you know how many hours is on it?
Oh, no, sir, I do not.
Okay. That's, that's okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, and Resolution Number 15-12-14-2 is approved. Every year at the end of the year, we take an opportunity to give notice of what our current business establishments are that have an alcohol license in the city, and to the best of our knowledge, there have been no conflicts or problems with these, and they are subject to an annual reapproval by the city council, and this is the list that we currently have that is in effect. Just takes a simple motion and second vote to reapprove them, if that's the desire of the council.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Barton, seconded by Councilman Poole, to grant reapproval to these businesses listed on the alcohol license, and we'll reapprove them for 2016. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, and these businesses are reapproved. We're at the end of 2015, set to begin 2016. We've done some financial study, and income for the city has somewhat exceeded what projections or estimates are, and there's a resolution prepared here to provide a 2.5% across-the-board employee wage increase, if the council sees fit to do that.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 11-12-14-3.
Second.
May I make a correction to that? I put, it is wrongly numbered. It should be 15-12-14-3. Big boy, take ownership for that.
You said it should be 15?
It should be 15. Is that acceptable to, to you, Mr. Watson, who made the motion?
I made the correction also, the minute said 15-14-12-3.
Okay.
You need a second.
You seconded that, Mr. Barton?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions or any discussion?
This will be implemented on the first paycheck in January.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, and Resolution Number 15-12-14-3 is approved.
Uh, the next item I'll call on Earl Lambert.
Mayor and Council, I'm here to, uh, discuss a, an agreement, uh, between the city and the, uh, Alabama National Guard, that, that we're, that I'd like to petition you to let, to authorize a mayor to execute for the city. And, uh, I'd like to explain a little bit to you, and I'll, I can go in, uh, more detail, but I'll give you just a basis on it. Um, we've got a couple of septic tanks at the airport, been there forever, and the airport's a bad piece of property. Bad, meaning it, it doesn't perk well, never has. But we have one behind the, uh, the building that we own that we leased to the United States Navy, and it's, uh, it's a constant problem. If we have a wet time of year, it doesn't perk well, and the fluid, the, not the solids that are in the tank, but the, what are the field line will come up out of the ground, and there'll be a smell out there. And we've been fighting that battle for a number of years. It's, it's been better lately. We've upgraded, we've done all the things we can do, meaning 1.6-gallon flush toilets and, uh, we've, we've found a couple of little leaks that were getting into the tank, uh, even rerouted some drip from an ice machine. We've tried to do all we can do, but it's, it's a very marginal situation. Our only remedy for that, since there's not sewer in that area of Riverview, would, would have been to build what's called a mound system. And a mound, uh, is an external field line, and it would be like filling this room about four feet with dirt, and burying your field lines down in it a foot or two, and then you open it to the sun, and you percolate the water in it, and let the sun and the dirt take care of it for you. Normally, they're buried in the ground, and that's where we're running into groundwater. But that, what, what it did, uh, I got to looking out there, and it just, uh, came to our attention that the National Guard Armory had a, had quite a mound system, and as I, I got into it, it's designed for 300 men, and they've got a, a different mission out there now. They don't, uh, have these big, uh, huge, uh, events taking place on a weekend like they used to, and they, they're not using the capacity of their system, so I petition the Alabama Guard, would they consider letting us run our, and I'll use the word affluent again, that's where we catch our solids in a tank, and then the, what would normally go in our field line, we'd lay a line around, we'd, it's gonna take a pump to do that, but we'd lay a line and pump it into their mound system. And, uh, this is something we've been working on for about a year, uh, and, and we've finally gotten an agreement from them, and to be totally fair, where you can make your decision, what, what the city and what I've offered to do for them, to let us do this, and what it'll do is save us from having to build a mound system, which is quite an expense, and we don't have a good place to put it. In behind these buildings, uh, I can throw a rock and hit some cattails. I don't know if that means much to you guys, but anywhere there's a ta, cattail growing, it's usually swamp. So, it's, it's a bad place. Uh, we didn't have a good place to put it, so it would alleviate us from, uh, you could say messing up a good piece of property on the airport to build a mound. We wouldn't have to build, and we wouldn't have to build a mound. The only thing we've told the National Guard, they've, uh, they've let theirs go. It's in quite a state of disrepair. A mound system to work properly is supposed to be grass on it, open to the sunlight. They've let it go, and there's pine trees, this big, growing all over it, and it's not been cut. So, what we've offered them, to let us tie our fluid in to their mound system, is to clean it off of all saplings, all trees, back to the grass, and, and do about a 10-foot perimeter around it, where you can get a bush hog around it, and then keep it, it'll be our responsibility to keep that cut that way. And let me tell you, I, and I've talked, I've talked to Craig about this, once we get it cleaned up, it'll be, uh, there'll be about six months a year, we won't have to do anything through this time of the year, winter. But we'll have to cut it, and we can use prisoner crew. We'll have to cut it, mow it about, uh, two times probably a year, and we're talking, uh, we're only talking about a quarter of an acre. It's not a big, it's less than a half acre, somewhere around a quarter. It's not, uh, not, not much territory. Once we get it cleaned, it'll be easy. Uh, I think it's a wonderful agreement. It, uh, it's already permitted, and, uh, all the upfront money we'll have is to clean it up initially, and then, and then mow it, and if we had our own, we'd have to, we'd have to mow our own, so, uh, we're, we're not really out anything in the future. We'd have to keep up our own if we built it. So, uh, I would, uh, I would like to recommend to the mayor and the council that we enter into this agreement with them. Now, it's down the road, both, we, we have the option to cancel the agreement. It's not something we own and have to stay in, but I think it'd be a very good, uh, opportunity for, for the city and airport.
Any questions? Thank you. You got the agreement?
Sir?
Do we have a resolution?
No, sir. All we need is a vote on it.
Just a vote?
Make a motion to approve.
I heard a motion, is there a second?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay. Second, Coach. Motion by Councilman Barton, seconded by Councilman Cotton, to approve this memo of agreement. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, and the city will approve this memo of agreement with the National Guard Armory.
The, uh, next item is a proclamation, and I'll read the proclamation first, and then I'll present the proclamation.
My proclamation, "In recognition of service to the people of the city of Bruton and the surrounding area, whereas the city of Bruton seeks to support and encourage outstanding leadership and dedicated service to its residents, and whereas the First United Methodist Men's Ministry has worked diligently to construct some 250 wheelchair ramps for deserving residents in the community, and whereas the men's group has worked to raise funds for materials and hands-
has worked diligently to construct some 250 wheelchair ramps for deserving residents in the community, and whereas the men's group has worked to raise funds for materials and has provided the labor to accomplish the worthy task, and whereas the First United Methodist Men's Ministry has impacted hundreds of lives through selfless service from its beginning to become a shining light of service today, and whereas the First United Methodist Men's Ministry is a valued community partner in this city, now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor that the entire membership of the First United Men's Ministry be honored for service past, present, and future, proclaimed this 14th day of December 2015. I would come forward, I'd take a picture, and I'd like to present this, this two-gallon over here. passed several weeks ago. We, as a council, worked very hard to come up with a person to fill this position. Our, um, criteria that we were working with, we were looking for somebody that, um, had experience and, um, sound judgment. We were also looking for somebody that really wasn't interested in running for this position in, in the future, because we felt it would be maybe unfair to candidates that were thinking about running or had announced that they were going to run to appoint somebody that was already running for this position. So with that in mind, after most deliberation, I would like to submit to the council by the name of Kerry Barton to fill this position.
I make a motion that we appoint Kerry to this position.
Second. Councilman Poole, you made the motion, correct?
Yes.
And it is acceptable to you for it to fall under the number of 15-12-14-4?
Dash four.
And Councilman Cotton, you seconded, right? Same acceptable with you. Motion made by Councilman Poole, seconded by Councilman Cotton, to elect Kerry Barton to serve the unexpired term for District III Councilman, and it is under Resolution Number 15-12-14-4. Is there any discussion or any questions? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, Resolution Number 15-12-14-4 is approved, and Mr. Kerry Barton is so elected to fill the unexpired term for District III Councilman.
Are there any announcements or comments?
Yeah, you're going to let him know that we're going to swear him in at the next meeting?
Yes, I thought.
But did you tell the body?
Uh, Captain, Mr. Barton will be sworn in at the beginning of the next meeting, will take his place at that time.
I have neither any announcements nor any comments, Mayor.
I motion with adjourn.